... Councillor Orr.
Here.
Councillor Bowles.
Here.
Councillor Snow.
Here.
And Councillor Longa Marinos, absent.
John, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time I accept the motion to approve the adjournment. So...
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's approved. At this moment I entertain a motion to accept the consent of adjournment.
So move.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that, sentence intended. Jimmy, would you like to do an announcement?
Okay, first of all we do, I want to remind you that we need to set the third town hall meeting regarding short term annals. And I know that October is a difficult time for council members, so what are your thoughts? Is there a date that's better for some than others?
I'll probably be gone till maybe the 10th.
Well then you should be back in plenty of time for the council meeting.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Because it's late in the month, so for the council meeting.
Can we just do it combined with before or after the meeting?
We'll do it in the meeting if you like. That's how it's what I heard you guys like to do.
It would be my choice.
First one. It's fine by me. What is that, 21st?
Twenty eighth.
Or 28th.
Yes, 28th.
That's fine by me, because you want to just, you know, add a...
Good.
Roll it in there. Roll it in there and the folks can come in and we can talk about it.
Sounds good.
Should be getting down to it, I mean we've come up with some language and things, so shouldn't be too bad.
All right. The Wohin Lake Association is sponsoring a trash pickup on Canary and Clear Lake roads. On Saturday, October 3rd, they will meet at 11:00 a.m. at the East Wohin Park. They encourage you to wear your gloves, bring your trash pickers, and come help keep our community and water resources clean and safe. For more information, you can contact John Colwell or Pat Briggs and rather than give out their telephone number on TV, if you are interested in contacting them, give me a call and we'll give a time where we need you linked up together. Also, there's an announcement that isn't on the agenda. I received a letter from the USS Oregon Commissioning Committee with the Portland Council Navy League of the United States. The latest US Navy ship, the USS Oregon, will be commissioned sometime in the summer next year, and they are looking for contributions to help pay for the celebration, to make it one that everyone will remember and let the US Navy know that the citizens of Oregon are behind them. I have their address. I can have it put on the website so that everybody can get the address if they want to make contributions.
Citizen input, can you have some of your side?
No one makes a regular end but... No one on regular end but...
All right, thank you. So, we are in old business, so we're getting to public hearing. So, at 6:06 we'll adjourn the regular meeting. 6:06 we enter into public hearing on application for a vacation of a portion of Hellcat Road and a conditional use permit for a guest house. This evening we have a public hearing on request for a conditional use permit to build a guest house in a city lot with existing...
Um, that's for the next one. The first one is the road vacation on Hellcat Trail. We, you don't have a... Hi Jackie, this is Jamie. Okay, I'm gonna try putting you on speaker and hopefully this will work, okay? Thanks. Try. Can you hear us?
Um, I can, we're watching it on the computer, I can hear it on the computer.
Oh, good. But if you want to speak, you can, I can mute you or what? What do you want me to do?
Mute you?
You want me to just lay you, lay you down here, so that if you have anything you want to say, you can just say, "Hey Jamie," and let me know, okay?
Okay, all right, thanks.
So you're, we're gonna do, read this script for both of them, one of them?
No, she felt that you could do it without a script. It's a pretty simple thing. That script is for the next public hearing.
We have, under public hearing, we have two items.
Right, the first one is the Hellcat Trail.
Which we don't have.
You don't have a script anymore.
Okay.
It's the same process, like we always do.
You. Why is this one different?
Because she felt that one was more complicated.
Okay. All right. So...
This one is with, strictly with regard to the vacation of Hellcat Trail.
Got it.
Okay.
All right, I'm trying to read why this would be different. So, we're gonna have a public hearing on application to vacate a portion of Hellcat Road. Greg and Jackie Bonham are the requesters.
And then you take...
So, any, any party that's interested, that would like to comment on this application, please address the council with any concerns, plus, you know, any positive or negative information that you would like to have concerning the application to vacate.
Would you like to start with the applicants first?
If they've got, if they want to speak to it.
Okay. Jackie, do you want to speak to it?
Oh yeah, I can, we have like a delay, so I'm not...
Well, maybe turn that sound down for right now, can you hear us here?
I can, well we can hear you, Greg and I can hear you on the computer, see you on the computer, but there's a delay between what's going on on the computer and us on the phone.
Okay. So maybe I'll just, well, I won't be able to hear you unless you talk on the phone, so just talk on the phone.
Well, it is quite a delay, isn't it? Oh yeah. That is true, you say. Sounds like it's a delay, she's gonna read it.
Jackie?
Yes, I'm here.
Did you want to say something? Go ahead and speak.
Well, we're, we're asking for, as the, the letter and the binder that we submitted to the city, we're asking for a portion of Hellcat Trail to be vacated, primarily because we're trying to preserve the natural area around where we would like to build our forever home.
You'll find the staff report in the packet, all according to the findings from the planning commission.
Right.
All of the requirements that are set out by Dune City Code have been met, and their recommendation is approval. With conditions, Bonnie, did it have conditions?
We did the conditional use permit, the cloud nine, we haven't done anything on the provision.
Oh, maybe it's not yours. Maybe it's just strictly the city's, maybe that's why.
Right, and they're going to the private...
Okay. We do have one other person that would like to speak, and that is Mr. Murvis. I want to bring your attention to this map right here before he speaks. Did you look at the map?
Yep.
And, and see the determination? Uh, Mr. Murvis is the last owner of the orange parcels.
Who owns the purple one below that?
I'm not sure, I thought, I thought it was yours too.
I, I own everything next to the bottoms that is being vacated by Hellcat, so I own both sides of Hellcat, except for one little piece that, that ends at Hellcat that Ellison owns, which is 2,000.
Oh, okay.
And wouldn't, if I'm reading this right, wouldn't that landlot, I mean, it would, that property you wouldn't be able to get to?
2,000 would access through Boy Scout, which is where they access now.
Most, all of them have?
They all access through Boy Scout. All my lots from 2,900 down to 2,600, are you looking at a plot map? Yeah, okay. From twen, next, 2,900 down to 2,600, which is on the east side of Hellcat, they're all accessed through Boy Scout. And then the top lots, 2,100 down to 2,400 are on Boy Scout.
And a portion of that, and the road indications?
I can bring you, I, let me show you this one, I have it on this lot now.
Uh, Boy Scout Road is county road number 1116.
There you go.
Oh, this one, okay.
And it says, "Boy Scout Road going vertical."
And this is the lake, so how does this, how does this...
Can I come up there, Bob?
Yeah. How's this, how does this bottom piece on the right connects us?
Which side are you? There's a road that comes down through here, and I have it here on my lots.
Okay.
So I have a roadway that comes down and, and forks here, and one goes this way, one comes down.
So that, that, I would assume that the access, that it's gonna remain there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, okay. Yeah, just on this map?
Yeah. The only thing that, all, there's, everything accesses this Boy Scout from here, and the bottom, this lot here, this 2,200, also acts as a Boy Scout. And then the bottom part, we all access through Boy Scout.
All right, thank you.
And it's right here, Hellcat ends.
Right.
And then at the end of Hellcat, there's a big gulch, a big ravine, which is a drainage full of cylinder circuits.
Got it, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that wasn't exactly right or clear on this little map.
Uh, for the record, that was Joe Murvis.
Uh-huh. Oh, yeah. Sorry, Joe Murvis.
And I would also point out on this map that the colored... Thank you. The colored portions of the maps are all the people that provided written consents to the vacation.
I figured that, but I, but off the map I was concerned that somebody wrote consent and, but they had no way to get to that property, because that, that driveway, or that driveway is not there. All right. Anybody else? Questions for anybody from our council?
I have a letter from the bottoms that I'd like to read that to the council if you'd like, that they, that they asked me to be the representative to read it to you, if you'd like to hear it.
Sure, I'm good.
This is to the, from Greg and Jackie Bonham to the city council members and the planning commission. Um, Greg and Jackie Bonham, the petitioners, are writing to respectfully petition for the vacation of a portion of the undeveloped Hellcat Trail located in Dune City. The proposed area to be vacated is the southern 300 feet of the 50-foot wide undeveloped Hellcat Trail from the northern border tax lots 1700 and 3,000 to the southern border tax lots 2,400 and 2,600, as shown and highlighted on the tax lot, lot map of Buckskin Bob's camp, which is Exhibit A, Dune City Map 1912-2613. As you know, Hellcat Trail was planted back in 1910 to give the access to the campsites of Buckskin Bob camp. This camp no longer exists and was originally intended at the time of formation and Hellcat's inception. Hellcat Trail has never been developed south of the north edge of the ravine that is located northeast of tax lot 1500 and adjacent to tax lots 3,000 and 5,300. The undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail has been and currently is a fairly deep ravine and naturally forested by Exhibit B. The expense to the city for development of the southern portion of Hellcat Trail would be costly. To do so would require the construction of some type of infrastructure crossing over the ravine to gain vehicular and pedestrian access beyond tax lots 1300 and 3200. The south wall of the ravine adjacent to tax lot 3,000 is approximately a 45-degree slope. Further development of Hellcat Trail would also mean the destruction of dense forests and natural habitat, Page 3 of Exhibit B. The southern portion of Hellcat Trail proposed for the vacation is an undeveloped landlock strip that, due to the ravine, does not currently connect to a public road and dead ends at the Boy Scout camp. And is surrounded by properties that have access via Boy Scout Road. Vacating this undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail would save the city the high cost of road development for thoroughfare that is not needed due to access for the adjoining property owners, already existing via Boy Scout Road. Additionally, the proposed vacation would preserve the national forest and habitat that currently exist along the bottom Ellison and Murvis properties. As directed by O R S Chapter 271, 271.080, we contacted the two affected property owners, Joseph Murvis, myself, and Greg Ellison, for their consent for us to petition for the vacation of the undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail. Please see the highlighted tax lot map Exhibit A, which indicates property ownership in addition to the proposed area of Hellcat Trail to be vacated. Also, please see the individual notarized consents signed by Joseph Murvis and Gregory Ellison and the bottoms, the petitioners, as well as the property account information from Lane County for tax lots owned by Joseph Murvis, Gregory Ellison, and the bottoms, Exhibit C. Joseph Murvis, Gregory Ellison, and the bottoms are free holders owning all the property funding the undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail, including the vacation petition. We, the petitioners, believe the bottoms, Ellison, and Murvis landholdings along the proposed Hellcat Trail vacation areas highlighted on Exhibit A constitute 100% of the ownership needed for the vacation petition to be considered by the city. All three affected property owners, Bonham, Ellison, and Murvis, have access to their property from Boy Scout Road and therefore do not need the currently proposed Hellcat Trail access as seen in Exhibit A. We, the petitioners, respectfully represent and allege that it would not be an inconvenience to anyone for the undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail to be vacated. We, the petitioners, further contend the undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail is useless to the public as part of the city road system, and that due to the existence of Boy Scout Road, it is of no value to the transportation road system planning of the seat of the city either now or in the future. We, the petitioners, to the best of our knowledge, further assert that the vacation of the undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail would not negatively impact for pro, any property owner funding the proposed vacation. We are asking for vacation of a portion of the undeveloped southern section of Hellcat Trail to help preserve the east side of tax lot 3,000 and the west side of tax lot 5,300 in their natural state. We would like to build our forever home on tax lot 3,000, seen on Exhibit A. In order to meet zoning requirements for the needed distance for the current proposed Hellcat Trail, we would have to cut down into the hillside, the lake side of tax lot 3,000, 3,000, and into the western edge of tax lot 5,300, forcing the removal of several large old grove trees, Exhibit D. We do not want to remove these beautiful trees, not only for us, but also to preserve the public's view of the national wooded hillside from the lake. If the undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail is vacated, we could build our home further back from the lake in an area that is approximately 60 by 60 feet, cleared sometime before our ownership of the property. This cleared area is currently composed of tax lot 3,000 and the section of what is now proposed Hellcat Trail. Being able to build on this previously cleared area would eliminate the need to remove the large trees on the east side of tax lot 3,000 and the west side of tax lot 5,300, and would preserve the current land elevation of tax lots 3,000 and 5,300. See Exhibit E, yellow highlighted, an aerial map of tax lot 3,000 and the proposed Hellcat Trail, which was cleared areas circled in black. We understand, acknowledge, and accept that Dune City will want to discuss the potential need to create an easement upon the vacated land, as may be necessary to further and/or to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare. However, we also recognize that utility easement is already available to the abutting properties along Boy Scout Road. We, the petitioners, will pay the expense of public notice of hearings to determine the visibility of vacating an undeveloped southern portion of Hellcat Trail, as described previously in this letter and highlighted on Exhibit A. They want to thank you for your consideration for the vacation petition, and they look forward to your decision. Sincerely, Greg and Jackie Bonham.
Thank you. Questions? Concerns?
Just to clarify, there are no anticipated future needs for utility access along that portion of Hellcat?
I don't know.
Okay.
When we hire our engineers to do the water system, that will be something that they determine where it would be located. Boy Scout Road is a county road, so we would be required to pay the county in order to use it for public utility purposes. I don't think it's anything worse than a permit fee.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do?
No, I'm good with it.
Okay, your options are to deny it, approve it with conditions, or to approve it. Which we can do later.
In the new business.
Right.
All right, moving on to the next one.
One minute.
Does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to take up on this particular item?
Jackie, I know there's a 30-second delay, but do you have anything you'd like to add?
Do we have anything we want to add?
I don't know what else.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what else to say, to be honest with you, I think our letter kind of covered everything that, that we wanted to say.
Okay. Great, thank you.
I do have one more question, if I may.
Sure.
In the bottoms' letter, they state, "We understand, acknowledge, and accept that Dune City will want to discuss the potential need to create an easement upon the vacated land as may be necessary," et cetera. Is there any need that you will see to maintain an easement across that property for something that might come up in the future?
The only thing I can think of that would come up would be the water system.
Mm-hmm. And you feel that can be dealt with?
Well, if they build their house right on it, it's gonna be a problem anyway.
The easement request would be to the west side, so it would be further off, so they could put their house where they want in that 06. So the easement would go, just moving it to the west just a little bit, which really, I think they're planning on a well, I have a well, so I, I don't think that's gonna
Yeah, I don't.
affect anything as far as any future water systems.
Okay.
And as Mr. Murvis pointed out, we can use the county road, well, with a permit, with permission, we can use the county road, should that become...
Even if you ran a water system and it stopped at Hellcat Trail where it ends now, to go through that, there's a, there's a major spring and drainage that goes to the lake right there. It's a huge gulch, if you've ever been down there. I don't think you would supply your water system through that without building some type of bridge, aqueduct to go over that, because you're not gonna, you're not gonna vary that through that spring and through that growth of the big trees that are right there. So you would need to go around, probably end it at Buckskin Bob at the end of Parkway, and then come down Boy Scout to get those houses that are up on Boy Scout anyway.
It looks like there's plenty of, plenty of optional access to that, should that ever occur.
Yeah, okay.
It looks like there's plenty of, several different ways of doing it.
Okay.
If we were to ever get to that point.
Fair enough.
Is this still, is this a discussion, or are we gonna take action?
We're, we're still discussing it. And then, if we have, and move on to the next one, and then, then when we get to new business, then we'll, then we'll do our decision later. Okay? Had anything else, we'll move on to the application for a conditional use permit. Now, can I read it?
Yes.
All right, this evening we have a public hearing on request for a conditional use permit to build a guest house on a Dune City lot with existing residents. These proceedings will be reported. This hearing will be held in accordance with the land use procedures required by the city and state of Oregon, by the city and the state of Oregon. This is a Type 3 project judicial procedure. Staff will identify the applicable substantive criteria, which also have been listed in the planning commission's finding and recommendations. These are the criteria the city council must use in making this decision. All testimony and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria which you believe apply to this decision. Filling to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city and parties involved an opportunity to respond to the issue would conclude an appeal to the Oregon Land Use Appeals Board based on that issue. Any party interested in a, in a land use matter may challenge this qualification of any counselor to participate in such a hearing and decision. Such challenge must state facts relied upon by the party relating to the counselor's bias, prejudice, conflict of interest, or other facts from which the party has concluded that that counselor will not make a decision in an improper manner. Does any counselor wish to declare conflict of interest, bias, or ex parte contempt? Does any member of the public wish to challenge counselor's impartiality? I will, I will now open the public's hearing on the conditional use permit. It is 6:30. Staff report. Will you please have a planning commissioner report?
It is in your pocket. Um, the applicable criteria that are pertinent are the Dune City Comprehensive Plan, Dune City Code of Ordinance is Section 155.4.4 regarding conditional uses, Dune City Code of Ordinance, Section 155.1.3 definitions, Dune City Code of Ordinance, Section 155.2.1 residential district. Appurtenant sections of the comprehensive plan include Policy A5. Before a permit is issued on any lot or parcel of land, the applicant must present a development plan to the city. Such plan shall include, but not be limited to, water supply and sewage disposal locations, proposed land drainage system, and means of controlling runoff, and a plan and a time schedule for re-landscaping land for which vegetation is to be removed. Standards for the above will be set by the city council. Finding: The applicant has submitted a site plan illustrating the location of the existing dwelling and septic drain field, trees, swales, water meter, and driveway, as well as the location of the proposed guest house. Applicant has informed staff that minimal grading and removal of vegetation will be required. An aerial... An aerial photograph of the site provided by applicant appears to support his statement. Applicant has also provided a copy of the approval from Lane County Land Management to add the guesthouse to the existing septic system. A regional land information database shows that forty percent of the lot contains slopes of twelve percent to twenty percent. Prior to issuing any building permits, the city will require staff to perform a site review and determine the extent of the drainage erosion plan. If any, that will be needed, and applicant will be required to adhere to the plan. The policy is satisfied. Policy Six: All construction on property contiguous to a lake, Class F fish-bearing stream or wetland shall require a site review. Finding: Subject lot is not contiguous to any lake. Staff has determined that there are, according to the state wetlands map, no Class F streams or wetlands on the property, but there may be ephemeral drainage. Staff will evaluate the drainage during the site review prior to issuing any building permits and determine what, if any, mitigation is necessary. This policy is satisfied. Policy A9: Dune City shall provide for the orderly development and preservation of the land, controlled densities to prevent the need of extensive public services, and remain commensurate with the carrying capacity of the land and water resources of the city. Finding: While Policy A9 is largely aspirational and does not include objective criteria that can be applied through the land use permitting process, applicant has stated that grading for the proposed guesthouse would be minimal in order to preserve the land. Applicant's site plan does not illustrate an additional driveway access from Cloud Nine Road or Summerbell Drive, which indicates that no additional public right-of-way will be disturbed. However, it should be noted that in Dune City's Comprehensive Plan, Section B2A1 of Chapter Four, density is limited to one family dwelling per acre, but carrying capacity is based on soil capacity. It further states, issuance of any building permit requires the concurrent issuance of a septic system permit or the determination that no sewage system is required. In this proposal, applicant has also provided a copy of the approval from Lane County Land Management to add the guesthouse to the existing septic system. It can be concluded that this policy is satisfied. Policy A15: Dune City shall continue to operate under the State Building Code, providing standards for building construction. Finding: Dune City contracts with Northwest Co. Professionals, building plan review and inspection specialists to administer State Building Codes. This policy is satisfied. Policy A16: Final action on applications for land use permits or zone changes shall occur within one hundred and twenty days after a complete application, as been received by the city as per ORAS G27.178. Finding: Staff deemed the application complete on July 7, 2020, with public hearings scheduled for August 27 and September 23. Final action will be taken well within the one hundred and twenty-day requirement. This policy is satisfied. Policy B2: The city shall protect the waterways and geologic and wooded integrity of the area so that the community may proudly identify itself with trees, lakes, dunes, and rivers. Finding: Policy B2 is largely aspirational and does not include objective criteria that can be applied through the land use permitting process. However, applicant has informed staff that minimal vegetation will be removed from the site, and subject property is not located adjacent to a waterway. Staff will determine prior to issuing any building permits whether or not any drainage erosion control plan will be necessary, and applicant will be required to submit and adhere to any such plan. It can be concluded that the intent of this policy is satisfied. Policy B5: Elements of the aquatic environment, such as the lakes, marshes, mudflats, lagoons... mudflats, sorry, not flats. Lagoons, riparian vegetation, and critical wildlife habitat and resources shall be considered in the planning and zoning process. Finding: The zoning process is not relevant to this application. Subject property is not adjacent to any lakes and consequently has no riparian area. According to the state wetlands map, there are no wetlands, marshes, mudflats, or lagoons on the property, but there may be ephemeral drainage. Staff will evaluate the possibility of ephemeral drainage during site review and determine what, if any, mitigation is necessary. Applicant will be required to comply with mitigation requirements. Staff can find no determination that the subject property includes critical wildlife habitat. It can be concluded that the intent of this policy is satisfied. Let me keep going. Do I have to keep going? Policy B8 is, "The Dune City shall strive to maintain high water quality of Silkus and Wohin Lakes through monitoring recreation use, commercial and industrial use, and runoff of septic tank effluent." Policy B8 is largely aspirational and does not include objective criteria that can be applied through the land use permitting process. Just to let you know, that is a phrase that was added by our attorneys. So that's why it's there. However, applicant has provided a copy of approval from the Lane County Land Management to add the guesthouse to the existing septic system. The existing septic system was inspected in 2017 and is not scheduled for another inspection until 2022. Dune City will continue to require inspection of the septic system under Chapter 142, Subsurface Sanitation of Dune City Code. It can be concluded that the intent of this policy is satisfied. Policy B9: Non-point pollution sources are a threat to the water quality of the city's lakes and streams. There shall be no direct urban runoff into the city's lakes and streams. New construction and site development, including roads, shall provide a stormwater management system consistent with sound engineering practice and the requirements of this policy. Owners of the existing homes are to be encouraged to contain their runoff as well. Site construction procedures shall not contribute to erosion into lakes and streams. Finding: Applicant has submitted a site plan illustrating the location of the existing dwelling and septic drain field, trees, swales, water meter, and driveway, as well as the location of the proposed guesthouse. Applicant has informed staff that minimal grading and removal of vegetation will be required. An aerial photograph of the site provided by applicant appears to support his statement. No new driveway is proposed for this project. There may be ephemeral drainage. Staff will evaluate the drainage during site review and determine what, if any, mitigation plan is necessary. Applicant will be required to comply with mitigation requirements. State law requires that new building construction provide an onsite catch basin adequate to hold the runoff from the roof area. This policy is satisfied. Development proposed on slopes twelve to sixteen percent is subject to site review. New development on slopes over sixteen percent will require documentation from a licensed Oregon engineer which shows such development to be safe. The regional land information database shows that forty percent of the lot contains slopes of twelve percent to twenty percent. If development is to occur on any slopes over sixteen percent, applicant will be required to show proof of safety prepared by an engineer licensed by the state of Oregon. It should be noted that prior to issuing any building permits, the city will require staff to perform a site review and determine the extent of the drainage and/or erosion control plan, if any, that will be needed. Applicant will be required to submit and adhere to any such plan. This policy is satisfied. Policy C7: No development will be permitted in areas subject to landslide as identified in Department of Geology and Mineral Industries dogami maps and/or text. Finding: First review of the dogami map shows that the subject property is an area rated moderate risk for landslides. This policy is satisfied. Policy E5: The city shall cooperate with the Department of Environmental Quality to ensure compliance with disposal system requirements. Finding: Applicant has provided a copy of the approval from Lane County Land Management to add the guesthouse to the existing septic system. The existing septic system was inspected in 2017 and is not scheduled for another inspection until 2022. This policy is satisfied. Okay, those are all the comprehensive plan requirements. Now we get to code requirements. 155.4.4.2 provides for the approvals process, and it says, "The initial application and applications for conditional use shall be processed as a Type III procedure pursuant to Section 155.4.1.6. The application shall meet submission requirements in Section 155.4.4.3 and the approval criteria contained in Section 155.4.4.4." Finding: The application from Mr. Welton on behalf of his client, Mrs. Dorothy Carol Moores, for a conditional use permit was deemed complete on July 7, 2020. The application was scheduled for a public hearing before the Dune City Planning Commission on August 27, 2020, and a public hearing before the city council in September of 2020 as per Type III application procedures. Public notice of the application has been mailed, published, and posted as required by Type III procedures. The staff report and findings of fact was made available to the public on August 18, more than seven days before the first public hearing. This criterion is met. Application for submission requirements, In addition to the submission requirements required under Section 155.4.1, an application for conditional use approval must include the following information as applicable: Existing site conditions, B, a site plan, C, preliminary grading plan, D, a landscape plan including a tree coverage map for properties containing less than sixteen conifers per acre. The map shall include the location of every conifer with a diameter greater than eight inches at four and a half feet above average grade. Per acre, the map shall include the outline of those areas, stands of conifers, or an aerial photograph with enough detail to show the conifer stands. E, architectural drawings of all structures. F, drawings of all proposed signs. G, a copy of all existing and proposed restrictions or covenants. And H, narrative report or letter documented in compliance with all applicable approval criteria in Section 155.4.4.4. Finding: Applicant submitted an aerial photograph to show existing site conditions. That is your Exhibit A. The applicant has submitted a site plan illustrating the existing buildings, and septic drain field, driver trees, swales, slopes, and the proposed guesthouse and pathway from the existing dwelling. Exhibit B. The applicant has not submitted a preliminary grading plan, C, but has advised staff that grading will be minimal. It should be noted that prior to issuing any building permits, the city will require staff to perform a site review and determine the extent of the drainage and/or erosion control plan, if any, that will be needed. Applicant has provided an aerial photograph of the site, which clearly indicates areas of conifers. Applicant has submitted architectural drawings for the proposed new structure. There are no proposed signs, and there are no CSC and Rs. Applicant has provided a narrative letter, and so the applicable criteria A, B, C, D, E, and H are met. 155.4.4.4: Criteria, standards, and conditions of approval. The city shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny an application for a conditional use or to enlarge or alter a conditional use based on findings of fact with respect to each of the following standards and criteria. A, use criteria. The site size, dimensions, locations, topography, and access are adequate for the needs of the proposed use, considering the proposed building mass, parking, traffic, noise, vibration, exhaust emissions, light, glare, erosion, slopes, odor, dust, visibility, safety, and aesthetic considerations. Finding: Subject lot is 1.4 acres in size with an existing dwelling and garage area of about 3,001 square feet. The proposed guesthouse will be 1,673 square feet in area, bringing the proposed impervious surface to approximately 7.7% of the lot area. In the narrative statement, applicant has stated that there are and will continue to be three people living on site, that there will be no change in the number of vehicles on the property. Applicant's narrative notes that the existing garage can easily hold four cars and that the guesthouse will not have a garage. Applicant also states that the area around the proposed guesthouse will be landscaped to minimize dust and erosion. to minimize dust and erosion. Construction dust will be kept to a minimum, and a retaining wall will be built to maintain structural and land integrity, if necessary. It should be noted that prior to issuing any building permits, the city will require staff to perform a site review and determine the extent of the drainage and/or erosion control plan, if any, that will be needed. The proposed building site is surrounded by trees and other vegetation that should mitigate light or glare from outdoor lighting, if any. This criterion is satisfied. The negative impacts of the proposed use on adjacent properties and on the public can be mitigated through application of other code standards or other reasonable conditions of approval. Finding: In the narrative statement, applicant stated that the adjacent properties are vacant and would not be affected by the addition of the proposed guest house. Applicant also states that a licensed general contractor will ensure that the structure is code compliant. This criterion is satisfied. All required public facilities have adequate capacity to serve the proposal. Finding: Applicant does not state that the occupant of the proposed guest house drives, but the city's access roads, Cloud Nine and Summer Mill Drive, have capacity for one additional vehicle. There are no other public facilities. This criterion is met. Four, the proposal is consistent with applicable policies of the comprehensive plan for Dune City. Finding, as described above, the proposal is largely consistent with applicable policies of the comprehensive plan, with the notable exception of section B2A I of Chapter Four, which states that density should be limited to one family unit per acre. That criterion is not satisfied. The location, size, design, and operating characteristics of the proposed use, one, will be compatible with and will not adversely affect the livability or appropriate development of abutting properties in the surrounding vicinity, and two, will not be adversely affected by the development of abutting properties and the surrounding vicinity. And consideration may be given to harmony in bulk coverage and density, to the availability of public facilities and utilities, to the harmful effect, if any, upon desirable neighborhood character, to the generation of traffic, and the capacity of surrounding streets and roads, and to any other relevant impact of the use. Finding: In the narrative statement, applicant states that there are no homes on the adjacent properties and that care has been taken architecturally to mimic the existing dwelling to ensure a pleasing aesthetic. Surrounding lots are a minimum of one acre in size and shall not be adversely affected by the additional development on subject property, and their future development should not adversely affect this proposed development. These criteria can be considered satisfied. Six, will not be adversely affected by known natural hazards such as floods, slides, or erosion. Finding: The proposed project is not located in any known natural hazard area. This criterion is met. Seven, will not create a hazardous natural condition such as erosion, landslide, or flooding. Finding: Applicant has stated that there will be no significant grading or excavating that would increase hazards. However, applicant has not provided a grading or excavation plan as yet. It shall be noted that prior to issuing any building permits, the city will require staff to perform a site review and determine the extent of the drainage and/or erosion control. I'm not going to read that again. Conditions of approval? You want me to go through theirs? There's thirteen of them. These are things that you may, this is just to let you know, that these are some of the things that you may, as a council, choose to include as conditions for approval. And it's on page nine of thirteen, if you want to look at it.
I guess what's important to me is to hear that all of these conditions have been met. And I've used a couple of times, and I'm comfortable with not going through every word.
Okay, so that is it for the staff report. However, I would point out, on page ten, in the definitions, it talks about a guest house, and this application is for a guest house. Describes it as an accessory building without kitchen or cooking facilities occupied solely by nonpaying guests or by servants employed on the premises.
And your plan has a kitchen?
No.
Yes, it does. I'm looking at it.
Has that plan been changed?
It's got a countertop, it's got a place for the refrigerator. It doesn't call it a kitchen, it calls it a living room.
No, that's just it. It's not a kitchen unless it has an oven and a stove. It doesn't have one.
I'm sorry. So, they were telling me, we want to build this house, and we're supposedly going to be about, it never is going to have a kitchen, but yet there's a kitchen on this blueprint.
Although you can add that to the conditions.
Yeah, I think so. But anyway, all right. Thank you. Does any council have any specific questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Jamie, if, two questions. If the proposal was to simply add on to the existing home, would that require a conditional use permit, or is it only because this is a separate structure?
Only because it's a separate structure.
Okay. And given that it's a separate structure, and this parcel is only about 1.4, 1.5 acres, is there a possibility in the future, if the current owners were to sell, that new owners could say, or for that matter, the current owners could say, "We're going to divide this property in two. We've got a house on each piece of property. Now we've got two houses."
I don't see how that's possible when Dune City requires nothing less than one acre parcel.
Well, that's, yeah, and, okay.
I don't feel that could happen.
So, but, yeah. But we are, in a sense, I, the word isn't right, but we are violating that policy or we are accepting something that does not follow that policy. And, but if it was to come down to selling this parcel, it would require the city council to say, "Yes, you may, you may divide that property in two with a house on each piece."
No, well, it would, if they wanted to make an application, they can certainly make an application. You can make an application for everything. But our code currently does not allow anything smaller than one acre, and that's because it's tied to the septic.
It's what?
Tied to the septic.
Okay.
The soil holding capacity in this area only, can only match that of a residential parcel. That's why everything is residential, without special considerations. And some places in our city can't even handle that much, and that's why you have advantage systems and other alternative systems. So, in this case, we required them to go to the Lane County Sanitarian's office and go through that permit process and examination process to assure us that adding the guest house would not add additional, that would not result in the failure of the septic system, trying to push too much on it.
Now, suppose, though, that a family of five, previously unknown relatives to these homeowners, say, "Can we also come live in that house?" So now we have six people living in the house. Crowded, no doubt, but then the septic system is overloaded and we, we...
We would have no way of knowing that.
Right.
Until it went down. And then, yes, we definitely would know.
Okay.
So would all the neighbors.
Good point. Okay, thank you. But that's, that's basically true. Any home, I mean, if we decided to...
That's the issue on...
Pardon me?
That's the same issue that we're looking at on short-term rentals when we get to that.
Yes. Yes, okay, thanks.
Okay, we're done with staff. I have a question. I'm not sure staff is going to break people, but is it correct to assume that the guest house will pump uphill with some sort of a pump to the existing septic tank?
I don't know.
And then gravity feed down to the drain field?
I don't know. You might ask the builder who's here, the contractor.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Is there a sand filter required?
No.
Was there? Okay. How many people live in the existing house now?
Three.
And it's a 1,500 gallon concrete tank?
Yes.
And the guest house, proposed people is one?
Correct. So it'll still be the same three, it's just one will be moving from the main to the guest.
Okay. The other, just, I'm a little confused. I have a whole bunch of Dorthys here. On the site plan, I have Dorothy Moores, and then I have a Dorothy Carol on the elevation plan. Dorothy Carol again on the floor plan. And then Dorothy Adams living in the house. Who, can you, anybody strike out all the Dorthys?
I hope so. I had unlimited ex-husbands. I'm Dorothy Adams, I'm mom. Dorothy Carol Moores is my daughter. And professionally, she uses Dorothy Carol. She's an attorney, so she uses Dorothy Carol. But her married name is Dorothy Carol Moores. So, there are just the three of us, my son-in-law. And on page eight out of four, it's just three persons for the whole property.
Okay. I'll just turn and trigger off the Dorthys and who is who.
It's good.
So, who owns the property?
My daughters and daughter and son-in-law.
Which is a trust? Is that correct? Not, not that it matters.
It is a trust.
Okay, thank you. All right, at this point in time, we will take testimony from applicants if we should speak on anything that hasn't been presented. Are you good?
I'm good, yeah, thank you.
Councillors, do you have any specific questions for the applicant, other than defining the Dorthys?
I might add on the list and say that that was great, but we just, I think it's just them.
It is.
Are we aware of any, I know that the adjacent properties are vacant, I believe you said here. Are we aware of any objections on the part of any other homeowners in the immediate area?
I'm not aware of any objections, no.
Anybody here like to give testimony in favor of this project?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Hi.
How can you always stand in the very back?
I'll watch and observe.
Come on here.
I'll come to see.
This conditional use permit was thoroughly reviewed by the planning commission at our meeting in August. And as Jamie read, we reviewed all the applicable codes and conditions and everything else, which ultimately boiled down to two salient points. One is, is a guest house another residence on this lot? A guest house is clearly defined as permissible under the city's conditional use permit code. It is to be occupied by guests or staff. And I would say, being a mother myself, a mother is both a guest and a staff at her daughter's house. The second condition was that there not be a permanent kitchen. We felt that that was very appropriate to maintaining the nature of our community. We did, at the same time, feel that it's also incumbent upon a mother and a staff to have the ability to pursue hobbies, and for that reason, you might have a sink. It's also incumbent upon them to provide hospitality at times, so you could have a refrigerator, a microwave, a coffee pot. We did not get descriptive about this, but what we did say in our conditions is, "The guest house shall not have a permanent kitchen," to which I define as, "Can you fix Thanksgiving there? If you can't, you do not have a kitchen." So, we did say, pertinent to what you mentioned, Bonnie, that this conditional use permit for a guest house, not a residence, shall attach to the property in perpetuity. So regardless of who owns it, it continues as a guest house. So I felt it very, the Moores' plan, plus scrupulously adhering to both the rules and the intention we felt of a guest house and maintaining family accommodations, were met.
Thank you, Bonnie.
May I ask Bonnie a question? Did you, and this is obviously just strictly hypothetical, but if the, if the fixtures are there, or the pieces of a kitchen?
Well, so, to which you would have to define. So, for instance, if you're building a kitchen, are you going to be putting in 220? Are you going to have GFI interrupted outlets? That constructing a kitchen is very different from constructing a hobby room and having a couple outlets. So, we would feel that since this contractor and the Moores have said they are not to build a kitchen, that it would not meet code for a kitchen, and they would not try to do it.
Okay, thank you. I was just picturing whether the kitchen police need would have to go out and make sure that it wasn't being turned into a kitchen.
It's true for all of us.
Yeah.
So...
Thank you. Clears it up.
And we were also very satisfied that the water would be protected in the septic as appropriate.
Okay, great.
And yes, I have been the kitchen police.
You indeed.
I have.
Is there anybody else that I could testify for this project? Is there anybody that I'd like to testify on this project that is opposed to this project?
I'm not opposed to it, but I have another question. It seems to me we almost need two conditional uses here. One changing, this doesn't meet the criteria in our own code for a guest house.
No, it doesn't meet...
No, it doesn't.
Why?
Well, read the, if you can, real quick. I don't, I don't have my mic here.
An accessory building without kitchen or cooking facilities occupied solely by nonpaying guests or by servants employed on the premises.
I'm corrected. I guess it's the size that drove me, and I go back a ways. Remember, we had one here eight, nine years ago that we denied. They had two lots that they wanted to join together. They owned both, and they got denied on their application to put a guest house in, which I never understood why that denied. I'm for this. I want people to enjoy the property, but I just, you know. I think it was the size of this that threw me off a bit on the, being a guest house, this pretty large house in my world.
Like Bonnie pointed out, a residence has the kitchen.
Right.
So, it would be a residence and a guest house.
Right.
It wouldn't be two residents on one property.
Yeah, well, that was the same situation back then.
Well, we're still going to have a conversation at once we get to...
Yeah, true.
...out of the public hearing. Nobody, there's nobody who wants to testify that's opposed to this. The applicant may request that the record be held open. Does applicant desire to hold the record open, and if so, for how long?
No.
Is it now? All right. In that case, I'll close the public hearing at 7:05. And we'll reopen the Dune City Council meeting at 7:05. So, new business. Application to, for the vacation of a portion of Hellcat Trail. Conversation for the board, or the council. I'll see if I can see it.
Pardon me?
Any questions, any further thing? How do you, how do you want to deal with the Hellcat, Hellcat Trail vacation?
I would make a motion to have staff move forward with the vacation of that property without condition.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, the only, sorry. The only condition I would have is stated in their letter that they pay off everything for all the permits and things that go with it.
Exactly, what, everything they set up, yeah.
All fair. Any opposed? Hearing none, the application's approved. Our, for staff to move forward. Okay, application for consideration of use permit for building on cloud nine that we were just talking about. Only thing I have, Bonnie, is that you use the term permanent, and I don't see that written anywhere for a permanent kitchen. It doesn't say permanent.
I think you tried that on page 12 of thirteen in our report. Did you see it, 12 of thirteen?
I see 12 of thirteen.
The planning commission recommends attaching the following conditions of approval to the city council's approval of the conditional use permit. One, they have to do everything about grading. Two, the guest house shall not have a permanent kitchen. Three, the conditional use permit shall attach to the property in perpetuity.
I see that. I'm just looking at the, you used the term permanent when you were talking about the guest house, but the word permanent is not in the legal definition of guest house. That's all I was questioning.
Oh, I see.
I'd like to make a comment.
Yeah, please.
And that is simply that I personally am not opposed to this, and I would like to say that I am impressed by the amount of work that's gone into and the thoroughness with which this, first of all, has been prepared, and secondly, reviewed by the planning commission. I think on, on both sides, it seems like there's been a good process and a lot of, a lot of work done to make sure that the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted.
Susan?
I'd like to say that in the definitions, kitchen is any room which any or part of can be designated, built, equipped, used, or intended for the preparation of food or washing of dishes. Microwave, you have a microwave, hot plate, all of those, you can prepare and make food, and to me, is a kitchen. And according to this definition. So, to me, they have a kitchen.
Yes, I agree. So we either need to, I mean, we need to look at changing definitions or something because the drawing I have in front of me would easily be for, quote, "cooking facility." A hot plate, a microwave oven, and a refrigerator, and I've got a cooking facility. So I have, I have a, I guess my concern is, now, understand something. I'm concerned with it only under our definitions and things. I would like to see more of these in Dune City, especially when you've got elderly parents and things like that. So, I'm not against doing these things. I simply am looking at a drawing that is basically a two-bedroom, two-bath house that has a living room and a kitchen in it, and with very little effort, I could turn that into a residence and not a guest house. With very little effort. So that's my only concern, until Dune City catches up with state and some county codes where they're trying to put more family-oriented secondary houses, that type of thing, on these lots. So, again, I'm not against the project, and this is concerning to me that this could turn into a residence with a weekend's worth of work.
Yeah.
That was my concern, thinking that we needed a second conditional use. You know, when I was looking at that, I was seeing a residence. You'd call it a guest house, but to me, it's a, it's a second residence on the property. Again, I, I'm not against doing this. It's just, if this ever left ownership of the, of the family that owns it now, again, that very easily could turn into a residence.
Yes.
Yes.
Real quick, and then you're going to put a load on that system there. That's my, that's my concern.
I agree.
Bonnie?
I'd like to point out again, the condition is it not the permanent kitchen, it is not built for a kitchen. If they go to sell the house and it's inspected, they would say, there's no permits, who have built a kitchen. They would have to come back here and get those permits, which you would deny. So you have the ability to control any conversion.
But it's kitchen according to our definition.
Right. There's a kitchen there now.
There's a kitchen.
I'd like to point out, I'd like to ask, how many people have a refrigerator and a sink in their garage?
Nope.
Is that, is that your residence?
It is.
Here, here, any college student who consider a hot plate, microwave, and a sink a kitchen?
Okay. When you stay at a hotel, and they put a microwave and a kitchen and a coffee pot in your room, and they have a sink, you have a sink in that room, you have a refrigerator, and you have a microwave, you feel you have a full kitchen as a cook?
Nobody said full kitchen. That's not in the definition.
Bonnie, the definition is hospitality, which we felt was appropriate to a guest house.
It's not an argument, Bonnie. It's not in the definition.
That we disagree.
Well, we do seem to have an issue with what is a kitchen? How it's actually defined, how we define it, how the world defines it. Maybe what's important is how we define it.
It's not kitchen that I'm concerned with. It says cooking facility.
Okay.
It says kitchen or cooking facility. And I'm sorry, I find, I find exception to anybody to tell me that cooking facility isn't a hot plate, microwave, and a refrigerator. It's a cooking facility.
Well, if you're asking, what people who said I defy anybody to tell you that's a cooking facility, I will tell you that is not a cooking facility.
Depending on your terminology of cooking, I guess.
Correct. That is my, not my, that is my terminology for hospitality.
What's hospitality? Where does hospitality come into our definitions or our codes?
It's not there.
Thank you. Anything else? Greg? Just sake of argument, how long would it take you to turn this, on my property, how long would it take you to turn that into a residence?
A day.
Yeah. Thank you. Now, that said, again, I'm not against this. I'm concerned that we need better definitions as we build our codes, as we get into these types of things. I'm not against this project whatsoever, but I'm trying to point out some of the discrepancies that we have in our codes and possibly our committing processes. So don't get them wrong. I am a stickler for terminologies, definitions, and contracts. So I would, I would, I would like to see the project move forward. Although I would, I would, I would really like to get away from having a design that has obvious counters and a pantry. If you don't have a cooking facility, it sure as heck will need a pantry.
Yeah.
So I like, I like the situation. I think we need to have more of these in our, in our community, especially with, you know, the aging parents that we have, aging parents. Me, aging, hopefully somebody builds a guest house for me somewhere along the line, but I really, we need to work, we need to work on better definitions, clarity, that type of thing.
In fact, you know, as you, as you look at these plans, you have a bedroom and an office of nearly equal size, so that could be two bedrooms. You have a closet that's big enough to feed both of those bedrooms. You have a bathroom here and what looks like one and a half or one and three-quarter baths over here. This could easily become a full family residence.
Absolutely.
Easily.
Well, that office is legally a bedroom. It has a closet, and it has a windowsill.
Yes.
That will allow ingress, egress into the ventilator, which is fine. I've got one of them myself. And I put a closet in it for the purposes of being, say, I have four bedrooms instead of three, and it's for reseal.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Anything? You guys can make a motion, but I, quite honestly, the only thing I would like to see a condition on this, I'd like to see a blueprint that doesn't have kitchen in it. And that, that's the only issue I have with it. I just want to, I would like to make it a little more difficult for somebody coming in. But let's, I keep pointing at you, Greg, just because I know you. So I don't, I don't mean anything, but, but, so a contractor like Greg buys his house someday, and it's got a guest house, Greg would know how to turn that into a residence with not even talking to the city. And it gets out and starts getting rented, and we don't know.
How can we give her some sort of a break room where she can have a cup of coffee without disturbing her daughter, you know, with the teasing your, your rules?
Coffee maker on the counter?
Well, I mean, or a microwave or anything, I mean, so she can warm up something.
Oh, I have no problem with having microwave and coffee maker in it.
And a refrigerator?
It's just too big an area, at least on my part.
Say that, Susan.
It's too large an area. It looks like, could easily be a full kitchen. A little thing like that is something that you would have in a dorm room or something.
Or a microwave.
It wouldn't be that large.
Which I have.
Right.
But you're right. This space, this space is pretty significant for going beyond something very minimal. My concern is at this point, if we're going to go, I wouldn't know how, I mean, I'm with you. I'd love to see this go forward. I just am not sure how we deal with this issue. If we're, if we're, if we're, are we, are we asking that they go back to the, to that they redraw this without what looks like a kitchen? Or, I don't know. I'd love to hear some other comments by either you or.
When I first looked at this, I, my first look at this, I seen a two-bedroom, I mean, yeah, two-bedroom, three-bedroom house is what I see, with a kitchen and a living room. That's what I see. And I can't get that out of my head. I want to see this go forward. I want them to have it, but I think we need to do something about that kitchen area.
I agree. I just would like the kitchen downsized. I'm okay with them having a guest house. I need the kitchen downsized to something that's more reasonable, that doesn't look like a kitchen, that's more of a area so she can have coffee and, oh, my boy.
If I may comment, I have some hobbies that require flat space, a lot of flat space. I do Christmas ornaments that are pretty elaborate. I do painting. I do some other things. I came from my own home. I am paying for this house. I would like to have at least the convenience and comfort of being able to work on the things I planned for all of my working time to do in retirement, and to do it in comfort. And that's what a lot of this has come from.
I don't doubt that, and I think that's a great idea, but again, looking at code and looking at this building, it's a residence at this point in time. And it seems that we have an internal issue with what exactly is the code? What does it spell out? I can tell you, I've been through exactly this. And the code then was no oven. Absolutely no oven. If you have an oven, you have a kitchen. I was also told by the head inspector, you can have as many hot plates as you want, as many cooktops as you want, you can have a dishwasher, you can have a sink, you can have a refrigerator.
It was the oven that they were.
The oven determines everything. Now, you can have a toaster oven sitting on your counter, albeit it's small, but, you know, and that's okay. And that was all permitted, legal, according to the code three to four years ago. And according to that understanding, this would be fine, this drawing. Granted, it looks like a kitchen, but, you know, you have to see the electrical plan, see if we have an oven coming in. 220 for an oven. And if there's no oven, there's no kitchen. Now that, again, that was about three years ago.
That was the interpretation that the city has used for years.
Okay.
Of their current code. That's the code as it reads now.
So if that has changed, then I guess we would need to know that.
Who's, who's, where did that definition come from? Our, our code or?
Current code, right here.
Yeah.
What we read tonight.
Yeah.
Because they conflict, and they do. In one spot, it says one thing, and in one other spot, it says another, but they're still saying cooking facilities, no cooking facilities. And so that, it was determined that small appliances are not a cooking facility. So that rules out coffee makers and microwaves and hot plates and things like that. So that was what the city has been using for many years.
It looks like there's a stack washer dryer. Isn't the dryer 220?
Yep.
Not wrong.
Depends on the one you get.
So what are the appliances there? I mean, I see the pantry, and that, that, that sounds a whole lot like kitchen to me, but I'm, I'm just wondering, I mean, that is also a closet, but it's called a pantry here. But what are the, what are the built-in appliances? I see the sink, and what else? Maybe I should ask the contractor here. Is it great? What, what are the built-ins in this area that we are talking about?
We don't have a dishwasher. It's just a stack washer and dryer, and then a refrigerator, and that's basically it.
Okay.
Will there be 220 hardwired into that living area, the kitchen area, or food kitchen area?
If there's any 220, it would be for the dryer, but not in the kitchen.
Anybody else have concerns? Anybody else have any suggestions? Somewhere in all of this matter that we have here, there is a mention that this issue came up in all this stuff. And Rapunzel, we're talking about kitchen, and what is defined as a kitchen. Rapunzel referred to it to the National Electrical Code. And that was a page four out of five pages, and I didn't have page four. It was missing.
Right. Nobody has it.
Oh, okay. Is that?
I don't know where it is. I can provide it later.
But I mean, if that's the code that we're supposed to be following, and it's the National Electrical Code.
It would be if it is the current National Electrical Code.
And that would be on page four, which we don't have. So I, we're kind of in a quandary here because we're not really sure what our code is. Greg probably knows more than we do.
I don't know about that.
Greg, so in, in this non-kitchen area, you are still going to have to have GFIs, right? Because you have a sink.
Correct.
So we have 220, we have GFIs.
No 220, but yes, GFIs.
You have 220, I was going to say, the wall, it's pretty easy to get through, but there's no oven. That's right. Exactly. Okay. Here's, here's the thing. I don't, I don't have a problem with this going through. Duke and I looked at it the same way. You got a two-bedroom, two-bath house with a day's worth of work turning it into a residence. So really what we're doing is relying on staff and the, the applicant to live in a manner which goes to our code, not to our belief in hospitality. Well, if there is a possibility of having a dryer without 220, then let's eliminate the possibility of putting in a, and not have, not allow 220 to go to the house. Is that a possibility, Greg?
You would still have to have a separate breaker, and it, it wouldn't make any sense to eliminate the dryer, because you can't just piggyback off of a dryer grown up.
Oh, I see what you mean.
So it doesn't make any sense to.
Yeah, you would still, yeah, you would still have to have, and then go in.
Correct.
To the, to the kitchen porch to put the dryer.
Correct.
This isn't the first time I've done it since.
My concern isn't anything to do with the current situation with current owners of that and how they want to use it. It's down the road.
Exactly.
How easy this could turn into another residence. That's my only concern right now. And it doesn't sound like that, we don't have page four, so we can't sit here and read exactly what we need to do.
My concern is we need to approve it as proposed. Because of this, we're unclear, and we do know in the past that what defined it, a kitchen, was an oven. We know that for a fact, and. Yeah, well, I don't want to hear the same thing. Okay, so lacking any other, then I'm fine with this.
My only concern is, does the kitchen definition says no preparation of food or washing of dishes? And clearly can do that. So the definition here, you have an issue with.
Is that in the code?
That is in.
Definition of our codes.
Our code definition's right here in front of us.
And, and the flip side of that is, if I was building a hobby room as an addition to my own house, I would sure as heck want a sink in it. So is it a hobby room, or is it a kitchen?
That's what I was kind of thinking. Take it, call it a shop, a hobby room, whatever, you know? If you could petition it off, something from the, from the living room down where the island is, and make it a studio, I mean, a art room, whatever. You didn't have the island there, you had a petition, I guess, I don't know. It's just, mine is, my concern is down the road.
Yeah, understood.
And I think down the road is up to staff.
Yeah.
To start, I would, you know, I want to, I would really, really ask staff to get into definitions, clarifications. This is a, this is a good project to do that on. Doesn't mean that I want to hold up the project.
You will be getting it. This is part of 155, and it's coming to you soon.
Okay. Do you want to go to the neighborhood or are you?
Yeah.
Because, and one thing that we may or may not figure out is exactly what Duke was mentioning is down the road, okay? We need something in our policies that allow us to make sure that that doesn't happen down the road.
I agree that we don't need to hold this project, so, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please.
I'm making a motion to accept this conditional use and move forward, have staff move forward on this.
All the same, any further discussion?
Yeah. Just, just one thing.
Sure.
Just so I'm, I'm clear on this. Are we essentially relying on the, the, what should I say? That the honesty and the goodwill of the owners, that this will not be turned into another residence on the property? Because as far as I know, we don't have any means of ensuring that, other than saying, you've told us you won't, and so therefore we, we follow that, at least until we have done whatever we're going to do upgrading our own code. Am I correct about that?
You're correct. That's what.
Okay.
But to some extent, that could apply to any property.
Yes.
In Dune City.
Yes, it could.
And anybody can bootleg anything.
And does.
Yes, and does.
And I don't. I agree he doesn't, because I've asked him to, and he refused.
You tried.
Tried to do it.
Just for your information, since I've been city administrator, we have administered...
we have administered a program where we have each been going through all of the files for our department. And for example, if there is a permit that was closed without an inspection, we put a red flag, a red piece of paper, literally, in the file and say on there what's wrong. And so when we have a conditional use permit like this one, it's going to have limitations and restrictions, that will be in the file. So when Joe Realtor shows up on my doorstep because somebody wants to sell the property, and they will see that it cannot be advertised as a kitchen, and a kitchen cannot be placed.
Like I said before, my concern is with the owners right now and the situation that they're doing is down the road.
Yeah, and down the road, we do have a problem with them because we've never really tracked it before. But now we're tracking.
Good.
Bonnie, is that something that you guys could bring up in your group as well?
Well, we're definitely working on 155 and trying to bring it up to the spirit of current law. And this kitchen issue is definitely a conundrum. And you kind of go into it, try and solve it. It's very difficult too, that you don't want to be too prescriptive or too descriptive. So for instance, 100 years ago, nobody would have said anything about a microwave or a toaster oven. And would have said wood stove. No, we don't do that anymore. So it leaves a lot. We have leaned on the definition of permanent kitchen. And I can see the confusion and concern it's caused today. And I could just put this up for our remaining work on 155. And we're so advised.
Thank you very much.
Good.
Any other? Do we have a second?
There was a second, I believe. Is that right?
Yes.
All the papers?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
It passes. Thank you for tolerating our concerns.
Well, you're good.
Okay, ordinance. Oh, what's going on?
It doesn't.
Doesn't have a number?
No, because this is an ordinance that proposes a change to our zoning code.
Anyone who has somebody that wants to be...
Yes, and we have someone that wants to speak to it because it is, it would definitely affect...
Thank you very much.
Sorry if you lost, Paul.
I'm not quite with you, except for a trial.
Please, sorry.
Despite appearances. Yeah, exactly.
All right, explain this ordinance to us and why the city should not be held to the same code.
Okay, example. When the city puts in a municipal water system, we're going to need pump stations. Pump stations are bigger than what goes in the driveway usually. And sometimes you need just a little piece of property. And in this case, we're talking about access to the weir. There is a lot that's for sale that... And then there's, the, the access to the weir is attached to a lot that is not for sale. But next to it is a lot that is for sale and meets the requirements of one acre parcels. If we, we don't need a big piece of property. We need a driveway and a way to turn around and come back so that we can have land access to the property. And the state has indicated that if we don't get land access to the property, they don't see how we can ever perfect our, our water rights. And they're, it would come into a problem when it comes to requesting the extension that we're going to be asking for. So I got together with Gene. Gene Wabi and I talked about it and what was the best way. I wanted to keep off of the driveway, keep off of the Anderson's property to the great, greatest extent possible. And then I mentioned that I had found state law that allows for cities to say, okay, for this purpose, it's a public purpose, and it's in the best interest and health and safety of the public. It won't apply to this parcel. And the only way you can do that under state law is, here's what it says. It says, "City ordinance is applicable to public property. City ordinance is regulating the location, construction, maintenance, repair, alteration, use, and occupancy of land and buildings and other structures shall apply to publicly owned property except as the ordinance prescribed to the contrary." So a city can say with regard to properties acquired for electrical, our electrical system, our telephone system, or 5G, or, you know, in this case, we're thinking water system, that you can say they don't apply. So that you can, see, our code requires one acre minimums. We can't go any smaller than one acre. And it also requires on lakefront property that you have 60, 60 feet, at least 65, 65 feet of lakefront property. Or it won't be considered a lakefront property, and they won't, it won't be approved. And I don't have any desire to take away the value of any place of property that way. I just would like to be able to get a little tiny chunk, split off one end, so that we can get land access to and from the electric control structure for maintenance purposes. Well, and then what it would do, and because it would be smaller, it would now take that other parcel that is for sale. And it would, because we'd have to cut into that a little bit, it still makes it marketable. It's still something that can be sold and marketable if they want to cut off another piece over there. So that's what I was trying to accomplish. And it is a land use thing, so it's going to have to go through the whole process with the CAC and all that. But I brought it to you just to ask. Is this something that you like? It could be something that you hate and not even consider and, and think of a, you know, I don't know. It's just, this is a problem I see coming.
We've been doing this for a long time. I, you know, I think you've exhausted about everything, keeping it in print, or do you want to...
But before you speak, there are people that want to talk.
Yeah.
There's what?
There's people that would like to talk about this issue.
Introduce yourself, please.
I'm Deanna Mitchell. And I was informed of this about half, half an hour before the meeting started, so I'm not completely prepared. But first of all, I, my question is, when you bring ordinance like this up in, in the city council meeting, shouldn't that property owner be invited or told that that's on the schedule? Because I didn't know about it till someone informed me. So anyway, so that would, that would be my request, is that when we talk about the weir and all that, that, that we would be part of this discussion, right? And the, I'm here representing my mother, who was Diane Anderson, who was the owner of the, of the property that she's, that she's talking about. And I, I handle all her affairs, so. Anyway, so, and I, I have, I spoke to my dad, who pretty much handled all the affairs before he passed away. And he had informed me the discussions that he would have had as a city council and, and what his desire was for that property and the weir and all of that. And I think right now, the agreement is that all, everything that happens with the weir is from the water, right? So that there's no, nothing happening on, that they, they don't have to encroach on his property. The particular piece, if I'm understanding, and again, I haven't done my homework very well because I didn't have a lot of time. But the pieces that you're discussing right now is lakefront, is a lakefront lot that my dad had parceled out to sell as a family or whatever at some point. If, there has to be some sort of arrangement or agreement, and Duke probably knows better what my dad was thinking than, than I do. But, but if, if we, as it was, the letter that I got was that there's going to be a 10-foot, I think, I believe it's 10-foot wide. I don't have a letter with me. It's in a different file. But 10-foot wide in, but then it was a 30-foot piece of lakefront property that included the weir. And in my mind, that was a lot. You know, I went and walked it, and I thought, the weir is, you know, as wide as this table. Why do we have 30 feet on those, you know, total that's taking that hole in the lakefront piece? And in my mind, I mean, maybe it would be good to walk it with Gene Wabi, but in my mind, that completely takes the value of that piece of property away. You really can't sell it, you know, because you've got, the city owns this, and then you have this. And I, maybe I'm totally misunderstanding how it's going to look. But there's, I guess what I'm saying is, I, we need to have a discussion and be able to walk, walk it through and, and talk about what's going to happen with the weir and why, why can we not still have that agreement from the water and not encroach on the property? Anyway, and Jamie had, Jamie's talked to us. This was years ago, probably four years ago, a little bit with my mom and I. But we haven't, we haven't really talked about it since. And my mom was pretty adamant that she didn't want this to happen. So anyway, just, I would like to have the opportunity to be in part of this discussion and not have the city say, we're going to annex this when it's property that my dad had developed, or, you know, developed for, to be able to sell. And it's right next to my mom's house. And there's a creek there that's really beautiful. And if you put, you know, if you're putting, it's one thing to say, we're going to put a road in. But if we're putting tanks and structures and all of that, that's what my dad was, he's like, I don't want a water treatment plant right here next to my house. So anyway, I guess we need to know what the intentions are, what's, what's it going to look like? Anyway, I don't know what, how this ordinance impacts whatever initially goes forward from here. But I guess my main thing is, we need to be part of that discussion because it's my parents' property. So, and I, and it wouldn't be something that you would call my mom and talk to her about because I would have to be the one that you talk to, so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Right, and, and...
And I also have an appraisal of that piece of property that's just four years old. So, so, you know, it has value that if the city, I don't know if the city is planning on buying it or, I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
This will not be the only location where we're going to have to have access and easements. So I guess we can just continue and... Anyway, whatever you think, if, I, I just don't know what's going to happen when we ask for the extension.
What's going to happen? I'm sorry, what?
When we ask for the extension next year.
Right. Right.
And to get that extension, we have to have a water treatment system in, is that...
No, we just have to have access to the weir. Something other than having to call and get permission. Something that we can take cement trucks down and make repairs for, which is why the big turnaround is for the big truck.
Why does it have to be the weir? I don't, I just, I don't understand. Can we get some other location?
No, we are, the city is responsible for maintaining and keeping that dam running and operational in accordance with this, with our permits. And we can't get, do it, to do it.
Okay. But do we need a water treatment plant and a weir in order to maintain?
No, that's not the plan at this point. I don't think that was ever the plan.
We need to be able to guarantee that the weir is functioning and that the water that comes into Wopek is actually going to come into Socos. And we have to guarantee to keep our water rights that there's fish passage.
That makes sense.
And we need to be able to be on the weir to, you know, make sure all of that stuff is happening.
And right now, the only way we get there is by water?
By boat, yeah.
And that's the only way we can get there, is by water.
But we don't need to build a water treatment plant in order to keep our water, or to...
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. No, the extension that we're seeking is only as to the domestic water right that everybody's using right now. The ones that you pay the annual fee for and all that stuff.
Okay, but the access to weir would still cause this situation where...
I can't show that we are moving forward or that we are taking care of the weir.
So the access would require that we have 30 feet either side of the weir?
No.
That doesn't make sense, but, yeah.
No, it, it, right now, what we, we have water access and have 20 feet on either side that as an easement, that we can go and stand basically on, on the edges of the dam and to do construction work.
Okay, so that works for us, for the city?
Well, until you have to do concrete. And that's coming. Real soon, because we're going to have to redo the whole dam, put in the fish passage and all that stuff that goes with it. And I'm sure that, I mean, these, these people are wonderful people. Worked with Dick for years, you know. I'm sure that we could probably work out something with maybe not having the, the code changed. I just know in the future, the code is going to have to change that, or the city is looking at condemning a lot of people's property. And I know you guys don't want to do that anymore than I do. So I, I think that for purposes of this, our issue now is not going to happen in time for the extension for, you know, for the argument of the extension. But if, should the count, if should the state say yes, we can continue to use that water, then, and grant us the extension, then that might be something. I mean, we'll move into the next phase or we won't get the next extension.
What, again, is the timing on that extension? When, when do we have to?
Before October 1 of 2021.
Okay.
So this, this ordinance that you're proposing here is more, I mean, is more directed towards this particular project?
Right. I had worded it the way the other cities have theirs because almost every city has an ordinance like this. And I sent it to our attorney, and Ross said, well, that sounds kind of broad to me. You need to narrow it down to what you have in mind. So that's what I get.
I see.
What if we came up with a construction plan where you didn't have to have a concrete mixer right there? You can pump concrete along ways.
Well, I'm sure there may be a way to do it.
Oh, you know.
It's just will raise prices.
You can get your forms built down there by man, you know. You don't need a big access to put forms in and then pump the concrete in whenever we need it.
The other thing is, we obviously haven't talked to them lately about the things that we want to do. It doesn't mean that when we need to do that or that we can't come to some sort of arrangement or agreement, a contract with them that allows us easements, allows us to go down there and do the work and leave as long as we've left the property in the manner in which we saw it on the contract. So, I mean, an ordinance, you know how Ross and you are. An ordinance, I believe, needs to be broad for the future of what you're talking about with a, with a water system and things like that. I believe it should be. When it comes, and the reason I believe it should be broad is so that it's broad enough that when we have a specific project, that when we have a specific project, that we deal with the specific people to talk about that project under that ordinance of the things that we can and cannot do. Or, you know, so you go into that negotiation with them and talk about, okay, under this ordinance, we need to do this particular project. Um, so, uh, we need to be able to come in and sit down with you and figure out how we're going to do that. Uh, if that's what, you know, if, if that makes any sense. I have no idea without speaking further about the ordinance. I think, if I'm reading this right, the, the ordinance or the things that we're concerned about right now is that having, um, a piece of property that is not an acre.
It doesn't have to be. I mean, I had talked to Dick about purchasing a new property, but there was no way the city could afford it.
Oh, okay, sure.
I mean, yeah, it was a beautiful piece of property.
Well, you can probably make a difference.
However, I will mention it, we're going to get this discussion later. Money's cheap right now.
Yeah.
It really is.
I, I'm, by the way, I'm, I'm with you and with Jamie's original writing of this. I, I, I would love to see this be broader because, first of all, because it sounds like, you know, we want to be working with Dina and, and give some thought to some other ways that we could do this. And, and this is specific. And secondly, because it does sound like there are going to be situations where the city needs to acquire a piece of property that's less than an acre for city use. So I, I would, I would, now, I don't know if, if Ross said, no, you can't have it be that broad, or if, I, I.
No, he didn't say that. And I know he didn't say that because I was using the City of Florence's ordinance. And the only, you know, the only difference was, instead of going out and delineating domestic water supplies related to the water system, it said for public utility purposes.
Oh, there. That sounds good to me.
I, and I would much rather see that seriously than something so specific.
And the other thing was, of course, this is a change the land use code. And so it's going to require the six months' worth of meetings, public meetings for people to come and talk and discuss and all this other stuff. And of course, we would work with you individually. There's no way, I mean, unless they get to the condemnation stage, then, then yeah, maybe. And then I'll be fighting with you on the condemnation part. But I don't think they're going to go there.
Right.
I would rather see if we can get negotiated out.
Um, and I, I'm probably not understanding this whole thing, but, so the property right now is an acre, just a little over an acre. If the city were to have an easement or an access or whatever, and that you're still saying that that piece of property could be sold and build a house on it, even though it will, it would be less than an acre? That's what you're saying?
Well, if they split off just that little bit and still leave a marketable acre, that wasn't a problem.
What if it wasn't an acre? What if it wasn't an acre, the city?
Well, we wouldn't take more. We wouldn't take it to make, we wouldn't, we wouldn't create our own lot that's less than an acre.
No, but I mean, like, if you trimmed off enough, but the lot now is not an acre.
No, that's why I was going to Gene. We were trying to figure out if we could do it and we can trim off enough and still leave an acre, still leave the marketable acre and a place, you know, to leave trees and all that stuff. Anyway, that's what we were working on. But that's separate from this issue. I mean, it's the same because it gives me the ability to negotiate with you, whereas without it, I can't, you know?
I, I would be more willing to agree to this immediately if it were broad for living in this project.
Okay.
So, can you say that again?
I would agree to this ordinance more readily if it were broader.
Yes.
And not specific.
Yes, yes. Okay. Is, is that, by the way, something that we could just change and adopt right now? Or is that, no?
Because it is a land use code, we have to go to a C of, Citizen Action Committee.
Oh, okay, that's all the procedures you're talking about.
We go through hearings, process.
Hello, did we do that on this?
No, this was just to ask you if you were, wanted me to do that. I don't want to go out and spend thousands of dollars doing that if you're going to say no. If you're not interested.
Yeah. Although, on this specific project, I would certainly, especially with our water issue, I think we need to sit down with these people and get this done and get it over with.
Hi, great, Eugene, and I'm there to go talk to Dina, or maybe some more, walk the property. Dina, I have 1.6 acres and I have a substantial easement on my property. And it's still included in the 1.6.
Exactly.
And if I were to sell it, it'd still be considered the 1.6. And I pay taxes on the 1.6. They don't break out the easement and somebody else takes it. For whatever it is.
Is the easement a road, or is it an access road, or what is it?
It's an access road to another property.
If there is to be a visitation by Gene and Dina, you're going to be there, I would love to be a part of that. I, I, I would like to see this more in-depth for myself. So, um, if you could keep me posted on that, I'd appreciate it.
I will let you know, you know, the, like Dina said, I've been negotiating with Dick for years.
Yeah.
And we had gotten to the point, I sent him the easement, the land easement, the deed. Dean had drafted it up and I'd sent it to him, but, and he was getting ready to sign it, but your mom fell and broke her hip. And so Dick called me, he says, she's not doing good, I don't want to approach it with her right now. Let's wait until she gets better. And then he passed away.
Oh.
And so that's where it's been, I've been talking to Dina periodically.
Yeah.
But mom hasn't been in, in enough, I don't want to go there. You know, I just don't want to upset her, so.
Okay.
Without a big forum, I would like to be involved as well. I used to be in the hem and shield and.
What, what are you used to?
That's a long story.
I see, okay.
Sorry, I need to be shot, I, you know?
All right, let's move on to, uh, C W M H Q O.
All right, in your pockets and you will need to see it, so find it while you can and enjoy it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, what, this is our engineering firm and he took the task list that the attorney prepared and turned it into, uh, funding, how much we would need to, the city would, can expect to spend. Let's put it that way. Um, and then made a recommendation about it. This page right here has the dollar amounts on it.
Eighty-seven, eight forty?
No, it's a hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine.
Hundred and nine, two hundred and forty-five for all of them.
Oh.
Is this one that you had a previous bid on and then we asked you, or am I thinking of a different project?
What I, no, you are thinking the same project. Um, he had given me a ballpark idea, this is his written, and I, I had called him and said, there's no way.
Yeah.
That we can't do that. Can you break it down into smaller pieces? Maybe we can do small bite-sized pieces and, and get prepared for it.
Okay.
And so that's what this is. This is his, his idea of small bite-sized pieces. Um, he is currently asking that we pursue tasks one, two, three, what does it say? Five and six.
All the smaller ones?
All the little ones, for right now. Um, we do have, but we are budgeted to do that. Most importantly is number two, that grant application is due October 15th. And, uh, we need to get cracking on that.
So we do have that amount of money, fifteen, eighteen, that's about 20,000 or so. We do have that in our budget.
We have it budgeted. Um, I don't know number six, the progress reports, I know it's the tiny one, but I've already finished half of it and I will do the other half as we get near that requirement when it's due. Um, I am concerned that, um, water conservation and development plans are not included on this. Um, because we, in talking to Kelly Coke today, she is the one that I need to report all the readings to, the usage to. She says, if we do anything to change the transfers, transfer, I was telling her some of the things that we had in mind. And she said, we will need to update our water management conservation plan as well. So, there's going to be some of that in there too. Right now, I can write the WMCP, but when it gets into where I've got to calculate, that's what the engineers are for, so that I don't have to do that.
Is this, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, the first task is to, um, just the strategy development for, request for waiver standards. That's something that they will need to do in-house. Um, because they've got to decide what can and can't be done. They will do it in conjunction with us and we can make sure that we are able to perform whatever it is they're committing us to. Um, but it's basically a strategy session, building the strategy. We've already started most of it. Um, OWRD funding application, like I said, that grant application is October 16th. I will need you to give us authority to submit that grant. But if it is approved, it will come back to you to sign the agreement. And at that point, we can talk about the number, because right now I can't give you the numbers. We don't have the numbers.
That's the one that you need right away?
I need that approval, yeah, right away, to, the approval to submit the grant.
Okay.
Even though you'd have no clue how much and I have no clue how much. Um, and that is task number two. Permit amendment. That one, I have already done the research, it's been submitted and he has it. So it's a matter of writing that permit amendment and moving forward and testifying and all that stuff. Uh, task four, the big one. Had the city done what they should have done in the beginning, task four would not cost so much.
Oh.
The state requires that when you go to file beneficial use, you have to tell them at each point of diversion, and we have almost 200 of them currently, what size is the pump, what size is the pipe, what is the make and model of the pump? Um, what is the capacity of something else and a bunch of stuff that I don't know? And all these things that had, like I said in the beginning, had we known, every time somebody built a new house or was given a meter to put install in a current house, we could have required that information at the time. But because we don't, and didn't, and we don't have any of it now, in order to protect his license or for the things he submits to the state, he has to go out and do all that one by one at a hundred and ninety-five dollars an hour. So, I have been negotiating with him on ways that possibly we can save some money somehow by sending out letters to people, asking them to provide that information to us. And then, you know, if it comes from a lot, like say a CCV licensed plumber, then he can point at that with the state and say, look, the CCV licensed plumber says this is what it is and I accept, because he's licensed, I accept his word for it. And then we don't have, we have a plumber's fee, somebody has a plumber's fee. And we don't have an engineering fee.
So, this is a big one.
And we're still working on that. And besides, that's also a two-year idea. That's not something that will happen this fiscal year and carry over to next fiscal year. And then the last one, uh, the permit extension. And that, we've been provided with most of the information that's necessary. There's some changes that have to be made, but, and then I already talked about the progress report. So tonight, what I'm looking for is approval, first of all, to, to submit the grant, the application for the grant for the feasibility study. And second, to approve moving forward with the tasks, all of the big ones on those tasks.
One, two, three, five and six, you want all of those?
Right.
And those tasks, twenty-one, four oh five?
I don't know, figure out what they are.
I think that's what it's.
It sounds about right, I didn't.
Find them now.
Yeah, one, two, three, page one or two in the back, right in the.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, I will need a motion for that. So will, thank you.
There you go.
And this is to apply for the line?
Yes.
Yes.
Second. Further discussion? All fair?
Hi.
Any vote? Hearing done, you have your motion approved.
And can I sign the agreement? That's what we're trying to find out for, uh, what's that one? What is this one? The little agreement. Two thousand one hundred and five, twenty-one, four, twenty-one, four oh five.
Does that pass that budget in the, oh, there is.
Yeah, we actually have budgeted enough for the big one too, but we are doing a whole lot of other stuff that has to be done also, that doesn't just go to one person's pocket.
Do what you can.
Yeah.
So this one, this work authorization attachment one is for what?
Tasks one, two, three, five and six.
I thought we just approved those.
Yeah, and that's, so I'm saying that's.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry, I thought this was another twenty, twenty plus those. This is it, okay.
So I'm asking for authority to sign it, approval.
Yes.
And that's apparently, we have a motion and a second and everybody approved it, so.
Yes.
Yay.
Okay, good, we're on the same page.
No executive session.
I'll agree to it.
Yeah.
We got a report, sorry to take you so long today, but I, I, I really want us to get into a little more definition in our codes. Um, that's just me as a contract perpetrator. I want, I want stuff in writing.
Yeah.
The right way, just because we feel good about the couple that's sitting here doesn't really.
That's the whole reason I couldn't agree with it, is because I don't know the couple and I have to go by definitions and I can't approve it.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the other, other announcement is, uh, Robert Merz died on the 21st.
That's Cindy's.
Cindy's dad.
Dad.
Family has been here since twenty-six. I think they had a life, dairy out on Phil Creek for, for a bazillion years. And they've been in, uh, I know her mother's been in Lane County almost her entire life, so.
Oh.
I mean, they're, Bob has worked on many projects, dams, roads, built them, was a logger. So he'll be sorely missed. Memory room for state representative. And I, his old shop, I've got it right next to my shop, I'm going to put it inside that shows, you know, Bob Merz for state representative.
Oh, right.
Yeah, so I'm going to put that up in my shop, so.
Please extend our sympathy to Cindy and other family members.
Sure. Here you said a report. It's here, it's here.
That was it?
Is it?
I can't do anything because of COVID.
We need more fire, we need more range, we need more.
Everything I do.
Legs are low.
That's right.
If you want to do it. Uh, septic report.
I am required to give bi-annuals, annual septic reports. Um, so this is my report. There are 1,176 parcels in Dune City. Of that 1,176, 299 are vacant properties, leaving 877 parcels. Of the 877 parcels, 10 parcels have structures such as garages or sheds with no septic system ever having been installed, leaving 867 parcels. Forty of those parcels are known to have adantic systems in place that report monthly to the state, leaving 827 parcels. Twenty-seven of the parcels have never complied with Dune City's septic codes and enforcement action is being taken, leaving 800 parcels. Of the remaining 800 parcels, all have had initial pumping and inspection. Now, for 214 are currently out of compliance or are due for inspection. That's my report.
Jamie, may I ask a question?
Sure.
What, um, can we do, or perhaps what are you doing about the ones that are out of compliance or have never complied? And I can safely ask that, having gotten my own compliance taken care of not so long ago.
Thank you.
Great. And I have to sit here and shut up.
Yeah.
Bob, those non-compliance, we've been giving you your address.
Go around the back.
Yeah.
Most of them are situat, well, almost all of them are situations where the owner has passed away.
Hmm.
And no one's claiming, no one's coming forward.
I see.
I assume that someday that county might, if, if, you know, I don't know if somebody's paying taxes on it or not. Uh, they currently are not being used. I do know that much on almost all of them, because some of them, you know, it's so overground at the house, you couldn't get to the house.
Right.
Um, so I'm not, I just put something in the file, a red, the red flag in the file that says if this ever goes into play, somebody wants to sell it or, or it goes to foreclosure, that we get on record with that. Because 27 out of 1,700 and something is really very good.
Yes.
It's a good average.
But there are also some that have not been, had their five-year inspection or something of that sort. There was another number you gave us.
Yeah, the 217, I believe it was.
Right.
Those are people that are not in compliance, currently in compliance. Um, and that is a constant thing. I mean, that's what Melissa does every time she's here. She's sending out letters, she's doing follow-ups, she's talking to people.
Okay, cool.
Emergency service report.
The State of Oregon is on fire, in case you don't know that. Um, I have participated in a few of the conferences regarding coronavirus and wildfires, but it's mostly about wildfires right now, obviously, and so we don't have a dog in the hunt at this particular point in time. Uh, we did have a meeting, um, and I attended on it by telephone and, uh, that report, there wasn't much to say, mostly talking about the fires and the work that Mr. Yo had done, updating the, the comprehensive, I mean, the plan, sorry, not the comprehensive plan, the emergency operations plan for, for the area. Uh, lake waters are low as. Lake waters are low, as Counselor Snow said, guess you haven't noticed, we are more than twenty-six inches down on rain. And for that reason, there were, you know, dangers issued, restrictions on fires and chainsaws and that kind of thing. Those have been lifted to the moderate level because of the rain that we have had, but they still recommend people be very, very careful out there. And silk whores be on the lookout for neon blue green slime on the top of the water. If you see it, do not drink your water. Uh, let's see, be vigilant about fire safety and continue to wear your mask in public places and wash your hands. Stay safe out there. That's the emergency services report.
All right.
Insurance.
Yeah, there were eleven permits issued in August, one structural, one plumbing, one mechanical and six electrical. There was also one grading permit issued and this includes one new home build. You'll see next month we have several more. Um, the election documents are done, you guys are all going to be on the ballot, those of you that need to run, your names will be on there.
One.
The revenue ad hoc meeting met on the fourteenth. I think, who was not there? Sheldon, did you go to the revenue meeting at Darling's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was not there because something came up and I realized it at six o'clock and I wasn't there, so.
Oh.
Time flies.
That was a pretty productive meeting, actually.
Yeah, too.
I wish I would. I won't play well.
That's going to argument, we need to have a beer here.
Yes.
That's the problem. We don't serve beer.
Drink before.
We serve a glass of wine.
One hour before, get tuned.
For. With regard to that meeting, I was able to meet with the owner of Westlake Resort and I guess Warren and his wife have passed away.
Right.
Three years ago, I, I didn't know that.
Ula, Warren Ula.
Yes. Uh, anyway, the new owner's name is Brandon, he has no intention of selling. Um, very nice gentleman.
He's all right.
So there's nothing here for us to.
Compliance this month include a tent city that was located across from Views Harris. Um, but at this point in time, just make a mental note, short-term camping on your own property is allowed in Dune City, provided you have adequate sanitation and fire restrictions are respected. In this case, a recreational vehicle was present to provide for sanitation and cooking purposes, therefore it was not a violation of Dune City code. The campers have all gone home now. Individuals who have complained about trees needing to come town because there are danger trees must be aware that the use of chainsaws has been restricted as soon as they are permanently lifted, well, not permanently, but as soon as they are lifted, our crews will be back out there. We, you guys can report, can report on the Alder Drive issue. We did have a letter in your packets this, oh, on the diars this evening about it, but as you had reported that there was no need to do anything. And I will not be attending my father's funeral service this weekend, so I'm still here.
I have a question, you had a estuemen on here from Marshals, what's that?
Oh, I'm sorry, our heating and air conditioning's out.
Yeah.
And I do need to tell you that. Um, Marshals, by the way, was the only one that told me this when I asked them point blank, can we do it with smaller units? Because we're a commercial property, we're not allowed to do that. We have to have ventilation of some kind. And so we're not allowed to do that. So that's why everybody is going with the one, but on his, it's, it's in your, on his, he's also the only one that pointed out that we would qualify for the seven thousand dollar ECON program or at least a low interest loan or an eight hundred dollar cash rebate, prepaid cash. And nobody had ever pointed that out before and so that is nice to know that they might work with us. The only problem with Marshals is they aren't local.
Right. How, how big a problem is that though? I mean, they'll come out to service it presumably if they need to.
Mm-hmm, all right, I could call local people, they all have the exact same unit.
Oh.
I mean, you see from the, the two, I got one verbal and two written and they're all in the same ballpark. Oh, it'll be a little over nine thousand, that's what the guy said, so.
One is carrier and one is rude, I think, as far as manufacturing factors. Lead Marshals was the rude estimate, R U.
Probably, I just know that they both are getting away from train, which.
Marshals is a carrier.
Is a carrier, okay, so.
Root is the other one.
Yeah. But it was nice, they pointed out that tax thing, that, I mean, there ends up being seven thousand dollar difference. Is that dollar for dollar?
That is a low interest loan. The eight hundred dollars is the rebate.
The reason the low interest loan are eight hundred bucks, even though zero interest might offer, oh, I hate debt, so.
I just stuff everything.
You know, just take the cash discount, pay nine hundred bucks and.
Call it good.
Call it good and be done and pay for it.
Jamie, what's, what's your thought on, on which is, is better for us at this point? Because you have a handle on how the budget is flowing and what, what would you?
Well, with the eight hundred dollar discount or even on, like I said, the zero interest loan for five years, that would be a better thing for us as far as budget-wise, given what we're facing this year. Um, hopefully it won't be that bad next year.
Right.
That's a hopeful, that's not a, I know for sure. But at least it would be zero interest.
Yeah, you're right.
That's kind of what I was thinking, that's, that's quite a deal.
It is, I agree.
And yeah, this is a very tough year.
Yeah.
That, that would be, I mean, I, I, I agree with you, I don't like debt, Tom, but in this case, seems, seems like a pretty good deal.
But we do also have the full out in contingencies, so.
Good point, and we could save you eight hundred dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And on the third hand, we are quite a ways away, I mean, we've got a lot of this fiscal year ahead of us still.
Yes.
And we don't know what happened, um, what contingencies may come up.
Correct.
So I.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah. Is this even our, our recommendation?
I don't know, we're, we're into reports and all of a sudden we're back into.
I forgot about, about this being here, I was supposed to bring it up under good of the order and I didn't, I lost, I forgot to look at mine.
Is this Jamie's call?
Uh, what's the total dollar amount?
What's the protocol?
What's the dollar amount?
Nine thousand four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
No, it's not.
I didn't think so. That ten thousand is the, is the threshold?
No, um, it's, it, it is something that she has brought to us and done her, done her solicitation.
Right.
And now she's asking.
Fair enough.
What, what way do you want to go? If it were, you know, straight up cash, she had three bids and, you know, move on, it's probably not an issue, as she has a couple of different ways of doing it. I, I know if I were in her position, I would want us to comment on, you know, which course of action to take.
Right.
It would be helpful.
Yes.
Okay.
Sheldon?
Well, the no interest loan to me sounds like, you know, a way of dishing out the money over time and not having to pay more to do that and, you know, maybe have a better handle on our cash flow.
In fact, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it, go ahead.
That's right.
In, in fact, as we get toward the end of the fiscal year.
We have more.
And we see that contingency is still left.
Just pay it off.
Pay it off.
Yeah.
Susan?
I don't like debt, I don't like owing people, I, I would rather pay it and get the rebate, that's.
True. I'm, I, I've been in debt my whole life, so I'm used to it. Uh, I don't like it, in fact, the life with me, uh, I like the low interest part and if we can't pay it off later, that's what I like, this every time.
Tom? Are you part of that?
No, no. Again, I hate that, but I can appreciate the cash flow of currency that we're in now, so zero interest is pretty good.
Sounds to me like low interest has it.
Yeah, I'm not adverse to cutting it off if we have.
Oh, yeah, right.
Make it off.
I just like to think we have a little more control of what we have during that one.
True, that is, of course.
You lose the.
For, for buying ourselves six months worth of time, we're losing eight hundred bucks.
Yeah.
That we could have saved. So basically, we've given you no guidance at all because we could all, well.
Well, then too, you know, I haven't seen, this is just his statement, I haven't seen the actual document. You know, does that mean, you know, what, what strings are attached to that?
Right.
Here's, here's a thing for number one, I think that we should read it. If you see the document and it is, you know, a low interest loan and it's, you know.
Something we can live with.
Something we can live with, let's go with it. If it is not, then write it down. Let's get on with it because, you know.
Yeah.
All right? Does that agree with you?
Yeah, well, zero interest normally applies to seven thousand, up to nine.
Right, seven thousand.
So check it out and, you know, there's your marching orders.
All righty, thank you.
All right, anything else, Sid? You want to do your order?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, I don't know if it moved up here, we got a complaint cleared to City Hall or not, but I had a phone call complaint that some folks that live on the point of South Cove, they were in their home, they have huge picture windows and the lady was in there going, what the hell is that noise? Thought there was a electronic malfunction in the house, they were looking around and she looks out the window and she sees a drone on their front porch looking in their window. She went out, she went out and confronted it and across the water off of woodland, there were several people out on the dock that were running it and they started laughing and stuff like that. If it had been my house, that thing would have never made it home.
Yeah.
You know, and I know there's probably an orange against that, but I'm telling you right now, that, that's serious stuff, you know, coming down, looking in your picture window from somewhere. I guess, you know, beware, don't, I, I don't have anything worth looking at on my property, but don't do it to me.
Yeah.
Aren't those denture tarts?
Yeah, that's what they're there for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Nothing further.
Our meeting on October twenty-eighth, do we need to show up early because we're having a public hearing or not?
No, the planning commission does that, we meet at six, no matter what.
Okay, Town Hall.
I'm sorry, the Town Hall meeting.
Uh, we were going to include on twenty eighth, twenty eighth of October.
Oh, yeah, I thought we were going to talk about it during regular session. That's my understanding.
We're just doing regular session. Okay.
Thank you, Claire.
Susan, you have the order?
Nothing.
Sheldon, Sheldon's joke.
Fine.
You know why all the kids want to play soccer? So they don't have to watch.
Would that all contain a motion to?
That's true.
So.
Second, all fair. Someone turned it at eight twenty-five. Sorry for the length of time, folks, but.
It was.
It was.